At this time, I'd like to call to order the Gardening Board of Appeals for this evening. It's a continuance from our July 15 meeting. And it's a limited case tonight. It's a continuance of Mr. Bambachi's request. And there's multiple companies here, so I'm just gonna... We'll say it's Mr. Bambachi is one of his cases. And Attorney Tree is gonna present. I still will go over a few of the ground rules because we have Mr. Holm here, who I don't remember being in any other meetings. In right form, members out of five of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. We do have that tonight. Application must be normal in a heard in sequence in which they appear in the public notice. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear on his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters of the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. Members, the board must render its decision regarding variances within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application is duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render a decision regarding special permit within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All four members out of five of the board must vote in favor of the variance of special permit to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided for in chapter 48 of the zoning act. Information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance of special permit, any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification with a city clerk that 20 days have elapsed and the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed, as recorded in the registry of deeds, County of District. The board requested each person identifying himself or herself has to name and address for addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my far left is David Anteia. To my immediate left, Mel Cornet. To my immediate right, Richard Hanks and myself, Ray LaFonda's chair. The meeting will be taped and videotaped. Does anyone object to this taping or videotaping? No objections to the record. Okay. This is a special permit. It's been continued many times, so we're not looking at any decision point right now for any stopping. You know, it's been requested for this continuation from last month to, excuse me, cover certain items. And that's the opportunity we have to allow Attorney Christine Tree, representing Mr. Bambachi. So why don't we begin with you, Attorney Tree?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much to the board members for being present this evening. It's very much appreciated. Just gonna make this a proper slideshow. So we had certain issues that had come up at the last meeting. And what I would like to do is go through the response to these issues. I have, this is just as a reminder, this was the approved plan. This is the plan that was presented at the last meeting with the lighting plan. So I just wanna let you know that I have them available. We can go back and look at them if you would like. And then this is the plan with all of the updates that were spoken of. So the first issue really is making sure that there were a couple of notations on the plan, questions that had been asked and answered. But there was to be a certain notation. And this is a close-up of the notes on the plan. What has been added is number six and number seven. This is a McKenzie engineering plan, so we did communicate with Mr. Reynolds to ask that these notes be placed on the plan. He wanted to ensure that it was noted that somebody else had asked for these notes to be placed on the plan and not him. So you will see Jersey Barrier, designed by others, is located two feet from back end of Buddy Parking as safety measure and shall not act as a retaining wall. And it was that issue of what is it? Is it a retaining wall or is it a safety measure? That was the issue discussed that's notated on the plan. The next one was the exterior lighting design. There was a more extensive paragraph with an example of the fixture that had been forwarded to the board in an email. This is my condensed version of that paragraph. And it says, "Exterior lighting designed by others is LED motion-activated affixed to buildings, 7,000 lumens each, 3,500 Kelvin similar to warm incandescent to minimize eye strain or refraction onto a butter's and less distorted in stormy weather. All lights will be directed downward on the parking spaces and away from the abutting properties." And I do have another close-up of the plan, but it was really the notations on the plan that changed from our July 15 meeting. And then this is the depiction of the lighting and snow storage. And if I center on this triangular cone, that was the additional from the first version of the plan. There was also a question that was asked about...
Excuse me. Now, is there any lighting on the Buddy Parking side? Or is that strictly from the porch or whatever?
No, there is no Buddy Parking on... And there was not a discussion of that, but there is no objection to putting lighting on the Buddy Parking side.
There are little... There are lights there with the...
Excuse me, I know who you are.
Oh, John Bambachi.
Name and address, please.
Yep, John Bambachi, 18th Street. Each side of the deck, there are lights that are controlled by the residents on the porches.
Okay. No saw, there's no motion detectors or anything like that?
I think they're controlled by the residents of the apartment.
Okay.
Is... I have a question for the... In the rear, for the stairs, is there lighting on that all the time? I remember there was a discussion on that.
Yep, that is the subject of my next slide.
All right.
So, moving forward, there we go. So this is a depiction of the rear of the building. And I'm just gonna focus in on that flat layout a little bit. So as you can see, there is not an emergency exit door. There is not one emergency exit door in the rear. There are not two. There is a separate regular door for every unit to exit via the rear. As you know, I was not involved at the beginning of this plan or project. Mr. Bambachi tells me that when this project was in design, they had approached the building department wanting to use an emergency exit layout and were denied the ability to do that.
Attorney Tree, you said they were denied. Who made the denial?
Building Commissioner. They wanted full egresses. Those were originally windows. And so as part of the design, they wanted full doors for every unit.
And he rejected even lighting in the back?
There is lighting there that's controlled by the tenants. But I mean, it's not an emergency exit. It's their second egress. We wanted to restrict access, so it would just be an emergency exit because we didn't want people hanging out on the back fire escape. But the way that the building department looked at it is, nope, they're fully functional egress doors. People can go in, go out of them, control them. And a lot of the residents use it as their primary means to access the apartment.
So there's a fixture on the exterior. And I did go down and look today so I can describe it better myself. There is a fixture next to each door that you see here. The doors, as I said, are regular locking exterior doors. There's a switch that controls the light. The switch is located on the interior of each unit. So if we had, for instance, a door which automatically turned... A light which automatically turned on when somebody exited, the tenant would not be able to leave the light on for when they came home in the dark. And they would have, you know, a more difficult climb to their stairwell, through their stairwell to their door. This leaves them the ability to leave the exterior door lighted for when they're gone.
So you're saying that right now, most of the people, that's their primary entrance and exit to their apartment?
I wouldn't say most, but definitely some use it because I think it's more convenient coming up from the car in the back and walking around to the side.
Okay.
And I don't particularly love that, but that's the way it's set up.
And if the board has, you know, a condition regarding lighting, recognizing that it's not an emergency exit door, you know, I think conditions regarding lighting can certainly be put in and be complied with Buddy Parking, for instance. And as we said in the previous slide, the main exterior lighting to light up the parking lot and then that little driveway at the bottom.
And when those lights come on in the parking lot, how long do they stay on before they should slip? Is it continuous if there's motion down there?
Yeah, there's timers on them. I think they stand for a few minutes when they go off.
So they'll have time to at least see the stairs so they can head up the stairs?
Within the stairwell.
No, I understand.
Yeah. So that is on the lighting, snow load, and Jersey barrier. There was a request to have the surveyor come out and state the underlying. I'm gonna have Mr. Bambachi talk about his efforts to do that.
Yes, supposedly the surveyor's been on site, but the stakes aren't present. And so I don't know if they got removed or if he hasn't stated yet. And so supposedly they're coming back in the middle of this week to kind of finish. But they've already been on site. They've already surveyed it. I just don't have a copy of the survey in hand. We'll submit that with the building permit because obviously that'll be part of the department's.
Do they provide a timeline for when they may complete the job?
Yes, it was supposed to be last Thursday.
Last Thursday?
Yeah.
So we missed it?
Well, they missed it.
So when is the new timeline?
I'm hoping I have it before the end of this week. That's kind of where they are. We actually ended up having to switch surveyors. We did the original survey, hired. We couldn't get them out of sight. And so we ended up hiring someone else who came out within two weeks. And now we're just waiting on the man.
Who's the surveyor?
I'd have to look it up, but they're coming from Worcester. So we're using a different job and they can't do this.
The original who did not do the job was Hannigan.
I think it was busy.
Who was the original surveyor?
It was a name that is not familiar to me. I can pull that, because I do have the subsidiary files here, if you give me a moment. And that's gonna mean I have to end the slideshow.
So was nobody local?
Uh, no.
I'm gonna ask a question. Is there any reason for that? Because we have in Gardner, we have Zox surveyors. Leominster has Haley or something. I forget their new name, but it used to be... Wittingham and Dingham, right on...
Haley Ward. Haley Ward is what they're called now.
Yeah, we've used Zox before. It's just they... When we originally called on this, they weren't available in the timeline we needed. And so someone said they were gonna do it within the timeline and just didn't.
So the original plan from 2021 was Landplex. And they are, appear to be out of Lowell.
Okay. Any questions at this point? Dexter's known. Okay.
I did want to just briefly address, there were some concerns raised by an abutter. So I wanted to go through those. One... I'm sorry. One concern was about parking vehicles between the two properties in the Buddy Parking spaces. And the statement is that the spaces are narrow and steep. That is true. There's a statement about posing a fire hazard. I don't know that that's changed because I just to remind the board, the Buddy Parking is existing parking. The spaces were there. The asphalt was there. This is not a new creation. This is existing. This is the picture that was provided by the abutter. But I would say, and this goes back to kind of another question that was asked about the grade. The existing, the proposed grade is 18%. And the existing grade, while I can't tell you the percentage, is undoubtedly steep. So the representation that there's gonna be a retaining wall, I don't think is true because these are steep parking spaces which will be regraded. But if we were going to bring in enough fill to make them level, which is not the case, I don't know how it would happen. We'd need a retaining wall along the size of what's in the backyard. So the thought that there's gonna be a retaining wall and that it would be too close to the neighbor's basement is not gonna be a retaining wall. The neighbor, of course, is free to make repairs to his basement on his property as all other property owners are, as permitted by the city. I don't necessarily understand why there would be an interference, but I'm definitely interested in hearing any commentary on that and seeing if there's some accommodation that we can reach. As far as a fire hazard, any vehicle parked next to a building that has a fire is a fire hazard. I don't think it's increased in this case. I am glad to hear that the abutter wants to repair the property as we've all been by to see the big X that is on there. I think if there is a danger of fire, it is from that building continuing to exist without repair. As far as the concern about noise and vehicles running, vehicle noises that are not excessive boom boxes or somebody who's got a... Something that makes the muffler louder are within the tolerance of this, you know, what is considered normal noise within a neighborhood. There was a concern about snow removal that was voiced. And I just wanna show a couple of the pictures again from the abutter. So the building with the X is the abutter's building. The building to the left is the subject property. And there is a large pile of snow. It looks like the 30-inch snow ball that we had a couple of years ago, but I don't know that. There's a pile of snow in the front of the building. But what I'm gonna say to you is that if you look further down the pictures, what you can see is the same pile exists in front of every building on this street. I think this is city plows. I don't think this is the property owner taking snow, moving it all the way up and then putting it in front of the neighbor's building. It would be a lot of effort to go through. So I would make those responses. We had gone through the relief required last time. I'm happy to do it again. I made suggestions regarding if the board's willing to come to evoke possible conditions. And that would be... We have the lighting on the plan now. But if there wants to be an additional condition to call that out, that's fine. And the Buddy Parking could be included in that. The issue regarding the survey and staking. As I've said, the building permit is going to look at that issue. And we'll have to come back. If there's a problem with where the line is, we will have to come back to this board. And so, you know, the condition that I would suggest is a survey plan with staking of the north boundary line depicting the Buddy Parking spaces or all parking spaces on the plan within the boundary lines of the subject lot is a condition of the special permit. And if, to go further, a condition of the issuance of any building permit if the board wanted to do so. I am happy to talk about any other issue that could be conditioned. I apologize for not having the staking done by this meeting is a great disappointment.
I think before we potentially carry on some discussion and potential new conditions, I would like to at least hear from the abutter because he may raise some issues that may need to be addressed or I'd give an opportunity for rebuttal. And that could even provide some additional conditions that we would need to add. So I probably, out of sequence, I would like to speak with the abutter or have the abutter address this board. Thank you. Okay, first of all, since there's only one individual, and Mr. Holm, you're gonna speak in opposition to this?
Yes, no.
Okay. Well, then, there's no one here really just totally in favor. So is there anyone here who'd just speak in opposition? Okay. Please step up and state your name for the address.
Yes, my name is Aaron Holm, and I reside at 238 West Street here in Gardner. And so my concerns were the snow removal. I've owned the property for 15 years, and I've been able to shovel my sidewalk and my entryway to my house. Never had a problem. This past February, we had a good snowstorm. Snow was plowed from both sides of my house into my front yard.
And we just wanna ask a question at that point. The snow is in your front yard. Is that caused by the city plowing?
No.
Or butter pudding? There's snow in your front yard?
It's abutters on both sides of me that put it there. So it was... I was not able to get into that because it was hard as a rock. Or it was, I mean, I wasn't gonna shovel that. It was plowed up. And it was months before I let it melt, before I could even get access into there. What my plans are at my house, at this house that I have, is I'm going to take the snow from the front and bring it around to the back and put it in the back of the house. All the snow will be removed. But what I'm concerned about is having tenants or people or abutters putting snow from their property into mine, and then I've gotta remove their snow. So I'm concerned about that.
I understand.
I share the driveway on my, on the other abutter. And so I will take care of that driveway. My concern is, nobody is really using the abutters... I mean, the Buddy Parking, because it's too steep. During the snowstorms, people aren't gonna go down there because they're gonna get stuck there. But if it's there and they can use it as a space, I'm fine with that. If people get stuck there and they get stuck sideways, you know, then they start maybe brushing into my house, damaging this foundation. I have rocks that come out of my foundation and they go into the abutter's property. Those rocks can't be removed because they're tied into my foundation. So I'm concerned with people getting stuck and, you know, getting stuck in there and damaging my foundation. You can see clearly that those rocks do stick out. The... Access to the screen there, but on photograph five, those rocks that are sticking out of my foundation on the extreme left are tied...
Picture number, that's number five?
Number five, yeah. And they stick out, and those are tied into my foundation. So in order for me to remove those rocks, I would have to demolish my foundation.
So I have a question for you. So if I see the rocks, I see some pump staging. Do you have an idea where your line is or reference to?
I believe my house is right on the line.
Okay.
So does that mean that the rocks are on the abutter's property?
Possibly, yes. They would, I mean, that's, yes. I didn't build this house, unfortunately.
Were they there when you purchased it?
Yes. Yeah, the house was built this way. Nothing has been added or changed since the house was built, so...
Do you have tenants in your house, in that house?
No.
Does anybody live there?
No, it's vacant. It's vacant right now.
And can you explain the red and white X that's on your...
Yes, that was put on there when I first obtained the property in 2010 by the fire department shortly after I bought it. And that was put on there to let firefighters know that it's not a safe building to go into and that nobody resided there and that not to have anybody, you know, risk their lives to go in there for no reason.
Yeah, so that X really means no one that's firing.
Correct, yeah. It has nothing to do with, like, people just tell me, oh, is that... They're gonna demolish it because of that? It has nothing to do with that. It's just to protect firemen from entering that building.
And I'm just gonna ask a question because we had visited the property, you know, seen your foundation, his foundation, all that. And we saw the rocks, and some rocks are not there. Saw the X. How solid is that building in terms of its structure and everything? In terms of withstanding multiple winters, rainstorms, wind storms?
Well, it hasn't had... I mean, right now, it's under repairs. In 2017 and 2018, I worked extensively, working on taking all the field stone out and replacing all the footings, doing all new cement block work. And that's all done up to ground level. And so now, I'm ready to start finishing that. I've got the permits in place. I've got the permits in place, I have the time off to do this job, and I have the money to do it, so that's what I'm gonna, that's what I wanna do now. To finish that job, finish the cellar, get the support. I have bracing beams underneath there and everything, I wanna remove all that by completing the cement work, installing new walls, and then pour a new floor inside, because there is no floor, it's a dirt floor. There's a section of cement, but I'm gonna-
And do you have a driveway on that side?
I do not, it'd be on the opposite side.
So, the only driveway that you look at is the one that's on the left side of your house?
Correct.
On his property?
No. I'm looking out of my house, or you're looking towards?
I'm looking at your house.
Okay, from the street? So, my driveway would be on the right. I share a driveway with my other abutter. So, my concern was with this parking.
Excuse me, when you talk about people plowing and putting the snow in the front, where did that, who, who did that? I've never seen that one on the left-hand side ever plowed.
So, the, my neighbor on my, not the apartment house, but the other house, on the other side, they snowblow their driveway, and they snowblow my par, my entryway. I used to do it faithfully, shovel it by hand. I never, I never shoveled the holes, plowed, because I never had to park there or anything. But they did, and so they would snowblow the first half of the driveway. They would snowblow it, they would snowblow my entryway. In the last couple of years, they snowblowed it.
So, you're basically saying that the house on the left, the one that's, we're reviewing, is not the one that put the snow there?
They did.
I've never seen that thing plowed on the left.
So, there's the apartment house, and then there's a house on the side, on the other side of me. You're saying the house on the other side of me is never-
His property, the one we're talking about, buddy parking?
Yes.
I've never seen that plowed?
It's never been plowed.
I didn't think so. So, I mean, I guess I'm asking, who are you complaining that puts snow on your property?
So, the, the property, the property's on both sides of me, put snow in front of it, but it was half theirs and half on the other side. And so, it's a problem, like, I mean, they can't have snow being put in my property, taking snow from their property and putting it in my property. Because I'm gonna be taking my snow out in the back. Once I get it occupied, I'm gonna be putting all the snow from the front all the way around on my, the house side that I bought with, who I share the, shared driveway with, I'm gonna take all that snow and push it all the way to the very back. I have a retaining wall there, and it's gonna go over the retaining wall. And so, in the past, nobody has plowed that alleyway. They might have shoveled it a little bit, but nobody's parked there, nobody's, it's, it hasn't been a problem with parking or anything, because nobody's been using it.
Well, I'm just trying to understand your concern, because right now, no, no one's ever plowed it. No, there's been no incidents on that side of the house. So, again, I'm just poking around to see where your concern is.
So, I'm not sure what this buddy parking is, how much they're gonna use it, or if it's gonna be used?
I think it's currently being used now, is it not?
No.
One, one car's, not the second car, partly, because the, I think they're for the scaffolding and the grade of the-
So, right now, it's just- So, right now, it's just being used for one, it's, it's not, no one's going down the hill?
And, and, yeah, some, one, one car are-
Thank you.
So, nobody's been using that spot as far as parking there? It's there, and it says, there's a sign that says buddy parking, and so.
Well, I, I understand, I'm just trying to understand your concern.
Yeah.
As far as their property.
So.
I understand the other one, but that's not for us.
So, apparently, if they're gonna park there, they would have to plow that. Or they're gonna have to shovel it, or whatever they're gonna do, it's very rough. I, I don't know if a plow would wanna go down there, maybe, maybe not. I would think, if I, I used to do plowing, I wouldn't wanna go down that driveway and get stuck. You're gonna get stuck. And then where are they gonna put that snow? If there's a barrier there, you know, if they're gonna bury it there. They can't put it over the barrier, because they're gonna be, isn't there gonna be other cars parked behind that barrier? No? From what I looked at the last meeting, I looked at the, the map that they had, and it appeared that they were gonna put two cars on the corner of that apartment, up against my property, at that corner of the building. I don't know if that's the case, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the actual updates, or what they, but. So, the snow removal's a problem. And if they are gonna do repairs to this, and they're gonna fix this all up, I have no idea what's gonna happen with it, are they just gonna leave it, whatever? I'm fine with that. But if they are gonna redo all this, and they're gonna start bringing in excavators and start tearing that up, I'm just concerned that, you know, that they don't damage my property in doing something like that.
I have a thing, I just question, when you said, you know, if they're coming in with excavators and gonna be tearing stuff down, I believe, and I'll make a statement, and you can agree or disagree, that most of, if not all, the renovations and exterior work, that has been completed on that, on the one sixty-three, one sixty-five Pine Street?
As far as the structure goes, yes. We have, with the lighting that we just talked about, we have the, sorry, their part from-
I'll ask you, turn to tree, because Mr. Holm, like, uh, a comment about cars on the corner and everything inside. Can you address that with him about the parking that the changes have been made?
So, the, we did go through several versions and options. The final version is all of the parking is flat along the back of the parking lot.
Okay.
Um, one is on a corner which is meant to preserve the train that is there.
Okay.
Um, so it sticks out a little bit more. And then this is what's supposed to be reinforced.
So, that we go back, park in the corner of the property, your property, and will be used? Because they did have it marked out that they were gonna-
That there was an iteration of that one, that one is not-
Okay, so that's-
I'd like to ask for five, five year recess if we could.
Of course.
Okay. So, we'll recess for five minutes, gentlemen. Okay, so we'll now read Vivine. And are there any question, any other issues or questions that you have? If you do, please come forward.
Yes, so the, the only thing that I'm concerned about, well, one of the things that I'm concerned about is if they bring fill in here, and they put fill, and there's nothing, if they don't tar, if they don't, if they just put sand in, and they put a barrier there, it's gonna wash away. So, they would have to re, either re-tar it, or put something there to keep that from washing away. Because I have, I've done some work over here, and I've had to put stone there to keep, keep the thing from washing away. Right now, I have issues coming, water coming from the other side of my house. And between this garage and my house, there's actually a culvert, I mean, a ravine that had washed away. So, I've gotta fill that all back in, just from the rain. So, my concern would be any torrential rains or anything, if they put any loose fill on here, it's gonna wash away. So, that would either have to be tarred, or-
I'm pretty sure the, the plan is pavement, that's what I've been hearing, that it would be paved.
Okay. And if, and the other concern is, I am gonna be working on that side of the foundation first. So, to take care of any problems that, well, if they're gonna work there, that'll be, my, my foundation will be all done and completed, and they won't have to worry about disturbing anything. Because right now, my foundation is not complete down over here. I've got wood, plywood there covering it, and I have cement blocks only that high from the ground. So, it's not high enough, if they decide to fill that deeper. I, I don't know what percentage they wanna fill that, but I just don't want fill that they put there going into my cellar until that wall is complete. Once the wall's complete, they can fill it rid of, if they wanted to fill it full, well, that's fine.
Okay, I think that's a valid concern. I'll address, uh, turn to tree with that. I think it is a valid concern, is about runoff. And I know when we look at all the houses, we make sure, you know, the runoff of the roofs and everything else do not go onto abutters' property to cause erosion, et cetera. So, I mean, he's bringing up the issue of erosion. You know, I mean, if you've got the barrier there, it's only so wide. When water hits it, it's gonna go either to the right or left. If it goes to the right, it's going to the back parking lot. If it's going to, I mean, if it's going to the left, if it goes to the right, it's gonna tend to flow on his property. So, keep-
That's a good picture there, number four.
Is that an unpacked? Is that, is that picture an unpacked?
Yes, four, number four.
Oh, four? Oh, yours is so much clearer than mine.
Do you want these, can I look at it?
No, just, just that number four, please, and I'll give it back.
Okay, that's a big difference.
So, may I ask you a question?
When, when do you anticipate completing?
Well, I'm not sure when it's gonna be-
Like, this area right here, that plywood?
Yes, that's, so that's, that's, so behind that is just, I've got bracing. The cement blocks only go to the-
So, it's this last course of lock?
Yes.
Would you intend to put more course of the wall to build that up?
Yes. So, when I take that plywood off, it's, it's open. So, if they were gonna put any type of fill there, they couldn't fill it, be, you know, up above my uncompleted wall, that's-
Well, for clarification purposes, what, what are you doing here? You're gonna remove the, the pavement, and regrade to what extent?
So, I, I just wanna know that on the left, there's a post that's part of the scaffolding that, um, Mr. Holm very nicely has explained, so we'll move it.
If you're gonna have to come up, we'll get, we'll get closer, speak up, I'm very hot of hearing, and I apologize.
Um, so on the left there, there's a post that is part of the scaffolding that in his letter, Mr. Holm very kindly has agreed he will remove. So, and what he stated today is acknowledging that property line, and I'm glad to have his understanding be the same as my property owner's. Property line is pretty much on the building. So, the intent is to regrade, that means the pavement will be redone. There was a grade that was specified within the plan that I think I said was not too different than the existing grade. The upper part of it is fairly level. The lower part of it, the second buddy spot, is a little steep.
I think you said like eighteen and a half percent?
Right. And I don't think, I certainly don't have a measurement for you for the amount of material that might be-
Well, it might be more for Mr. Palmbaji, because you're not doing the work, he's gonna do the work.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it-
The idea is really to scrape it down and re, you know, repave it, in, in very much the manner that-
So, up, so up here, we have a high spot, and then it tapers towards his property. Are you intending to lower that, to make it so it's more consistent across the plane?
Correct.
So, it's not sloping towards his property?
Because it wasn't built like that originally, I mean, my guess is it's gone through a series of ice heaves and everything else over the years, until the idea is scrape it down, get it back to the base, and then, and then level it out and repave, very much to what it is, but, but straighten it out and make it so that it's uniform.
So, you're following that?
Yeah, basically, he wants to straighten it out, it's all rough, it's-
Yeah, there's highs and lows, there's highs and lows all over it, so. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you're just gonna get rid of the asphalt, regrade it so it's a better, so it's even, and then pave it?
Correct.
Minimal fill?
Minimal fill, other than leveling it off to make it safer.
And I remember from the, the past, you were talking about when you, you repaved, it would still stay about the height of the entry in whatever apartment that, that is down below there.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta, that, that person's got some mobility restrictions, they, you know, they, in that space, because they don't want stairs, and so we, you know, we're gonna work with that.
So, it's gonna basically be the same level as that, there?
Correct.
I guess it's a, an entryway or whatever?
And the barrier's really not a retaining wall, it's just, again, it's a, it's a, it's a stop measure, I think, from one of you brought up in one of the prior meetings, just so like a car doesn't accidentally roll past where it's supposed to be.
Okay, so now, I'm just gonna add my two cents to this of paving and resurfacing, et cetera. If we're gonna bring it up, trying to match it off, is there a possibility, when they- If we're gonna bring it up, trying to match it off, is there a possibility when they regrade it, pave it, that you can have it pitch just enough, it's going on your property, it's gonna go to the left? So not, somehow it ends up flowing onto his side, which causes, can cause a problem, can cause, you know, erosion underneath the paving. You know, we all know how ice, ice works and water works, that if there's a little, a butt butter that needs to move the water to your driveway into the back. Now that brings up my next, next question. If that water is going to the back on that driveway, how do you plan to handle some of the snow and the ice that's gonna result from water running freezing deaths? Cause you're gonna have people walking down that driveway, gonna be slippery, is somebody gonna be responsible for spitting, spreading sand and salt? Cause if you're down in the back and now ice has come all the way down there, the water is frozen, that's gonna be a challenge to get out of there.
Absolutely, and so, you know, we have a third-party property manager, snow removal company, they salt and sand and I think they have twelve hours after storm finishes to clear and salt and sand.
Okay, so now I'm going back to my first...
And you've had a copy of that contract.
So I'm going back to my first question. Can you have it constructed so it meets more of what he's looking for, but also water diversion? If I'm looking at your property, it's going to the left.
Yeah, when we regrade it...
It's not going to his property.
Yeah, when we, when we strip it down and regrade it, we could put a little ridge on his side just to keep the water, you know, from going right.
So now I'll just add another avenue to this. We're gonna have to meet again next month, as you alluded to. Do you think you can have your little plan ready for the repaving, regrading and the pitch for next month?
There's, there's really nothing to do with the pitch.
What kind of plan would you want? Would you want, I mean, because it's, other than marking that as a note?
Well, I think pretty much it goes like this now. So let's say if it has a six-degree grade or twelve-degree grade, that you're gonna bring it up to a normal...
We're not gonna bring it up. It's gonna stay the existing grade, we're just gonna scrape it down and repave it.
And the grade is...
Cut the asphalt though? Get, cut the highs, fill the lows, repaint.
It's just like if a regular driveway, we're just gonna, we're just gonna scrape out the bad stuff and, and repave it as it's, there's, there's really nothing...
Which way is the water gonna flow after you repave it?
We'll put the little berm, like you kinda mentioned, just to kinda keep the water on our property. But I mean, that's just kind of a little, you know, a little berm.
So it'd be all right for a condition?
Yeah, it'd be a condition.
He says a driveway, it says to divert the water.
But I, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't really know. I mean, we would just scrape it down and repave it.
Then the butter and I had a nice conversation during the break and we were talking about the stones that are part of the foundation. If there's a need to address them for the paving, we can always do some cutting or wearing down of the stones from the exterior. We're certainly not gonna remove stones from the interior, that's on his property. So if, if there's a little bit of, and it, it doesn't seem like they're huge, so...
No, I don't think we'll have to touch it, to be honest. Like, I mean, I wanna leave everything in place if I can.
Yeah.
I just, I'm gonna, I won't say this is my last comment, but I'm getting close. Sometimes a way to rectify a lot of issues that come up, we can't think of every question. You have issues maybe we haven't touched or not adequately. I would strongly recommend communication between the owner, his representative and yourself, out of the context of this room and this meeting. Cause many times you can correct shortcomings as an agreement between all parties, you know, and it's better than you legislate it, and it's better to have a communication and come to an agreement. And if you do, at next meeting, we would appreciate, and you could say, we have met, here are a couple of the issues, here's the resolution, so we just have an idea of what happened. But sometimes it works much easier and more effective than right through this process. Just my comment.
Okay, for the comment.
So, as members, have any other questions or comments?
I've got a whole lot. I've got a whole bunch.
You do?
Christine's watching me dance over here, just waiting for your opportunity.
Okay, fire away.
So, you acknowledge that the property line just about your, just about your building.
Correct.
You're, you're aggressive, no, I'll change that word. You've been working on this side, trying to get these blocks to build your grade up so that you're not having a water issue, so you don't have wood close to grade. Would it make sense to pave right to your building? Finish cleaning that up, just pave the whole thing?
If they wanna, it's not my land, so I can't pave it, but I...
No, no, not you, but if, if you were in agreement and, and just purely a suggestion, that's something you guys can work out, but if the lot line just goes just above, cause you're gonna be left with, you're, you're, this is your eve edge of your house, all your water dumps onto that.
Inches.
What I wanna do is go up a couple more blocks and if they wanted to fill right up as high as they want it to go, that's fine, because that'll be strong.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is that's something you, you can work out, or is that a, don't wanna get involved with it?
You know, I, I think if we have an agreement, that paving can occur, sure.
Because if, if, if you're willing to let it fill, then it, it would cut down on the, the slope of this thing.
And to be honest with you, personally, I don't care if they don't do anything. I'm fine with that. I just don't want...
Well, we're just, we're just trying to have peaceful resolution that you're satisfied it's not killing him in the meantime, to accomplish what he's trying to do.
Right. I'm just, well, I am the turn, you know, people get, go down in there, they get stuck with all the problems and everything, you know, I'm, I am the turn.
Now, this is probably a perfect opportunity of communication between both parties.
Right.
That you might be able to eliminate that issue you're thinking of. And, you know, that's just a possible resolution.
Sure, just throw that out there. If you all wanna talk about, fine, if you don't, I don't care. The second thing, the Jersey barrier, I think I'd rather see a guardrail at the end, because back to someone else's point, you've got a Jersey barrier, that's, is a barrier. You're gonna have water coming down the driveway, that's gonna spill left and right. Right? If the, what the water's gonna come down this thing, it's gonna hit that barrier and it's not gonna flow on, around it? If you had a, a guardrail instead, that the water would, and for snow removal, would it not be easier for snow removal that you don't have a Jersey barrier, the snow could be pushed through the, where the snow below it or is hand shoveled through the guardrail? It could just be eight by eight post with a, there'd be plank across. Comment?
So response, we'd need to drive the post down. I think that would cause more disturbance to both buildings. I, you know better than I how far down the post must be driven to attach a guardrail that would stop a vehicle.
Well, the Jersey barrier, just sitting there, it's gonna slide. If you hit the Jersey barrier, it's gonna go sliding down too.
At least you have a weight.
Especially if you have a lot of snow and ice underneath it, after, with, with the rain running under it and freezing, it's gonna be, it's gonna be at the very bottom of your property before it come on, if you don't pin it.
I mean, that's not a two-foot hole, that's gonna be what? And I'm asking because as, as all of this board knows, I am not the most enlightened person with regards to construction standards. So how far must the post go down for a true...
Probably four feet.
Four feet, like a regular post, like a regular post hole? So not like six...
Probably just someone in awe, or just to punch a hole.
Okay.
See, I, when you move to that, I always reference the, the fencing at Cumberland and Gardner on Main Street. I think it's probably an eight by eight.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's probably a two or...
That's a three by twelve board across.
Yeah.
That bumper height.
That's it, and there's one thing right there, so they can get under for snow. I mean, you don't have to go twenty, down twenty feet with those eight by eight posts.
Let me suggest that whatever you design, it's asked by the city engineer, so that way we don't get into these endless debates.
Well, a site engineer could design that.
And I, yeah, and I mean, I think, I think we, it was just an addition, cause I think it was asked for during prior meetings, but I mean, I don't think it was part of like the original additions. I think we were just putting it there to, to be helpful.
The signage?
No.
They had all the Jersey barriers.
Oh, yeah, that was not...
It was never part of the thing.
I didn't see it on anything, I've seen prior.
It just, it just came up maybe, you know, maybe three or four months ago during these sessions and we, we agreed to do it at that time. And I'm just worried that, you know, now we're, you know, going back on something that we already kinda added.
Well, I think now you've got an issue that I addressed, communication between other parties. You know, are you gonna stay with the Jersey barrier or are you gonna entertain this short eight-foot hole fence or six on the eight by eight post going in, so like a, just a little fence, a solid fence that nothing hits it, it breaks, you know? It's meant to hold back, say, a car or holes, but, so that's something. And then next meeting, you can say, this is what we agreed upon, then we can evaluate that.
Just to address the issue of interminably trying to get a surveyor out to the property. If the location is subject to this agreement, does the board have any objection to considering that as if we are still unable to get a surveyor out there? That there is no issue since there would be an agreement between the butter and the subject property that the driveway may be built in this location? There would be permission from all parties in interest? Is that something the board would consider? I'm not asking for any answer, just consideration.
I'm, I'm sorry, I hear you have to, do that again.
So if there's an agree, short. If there is an agreement between all parties in interest, which is the two property owners, that the driveway may be laid down in the location on the plan up until, perhaps as discussed, up until the building foundation? Would the board consider that satisfactory if we are still unable to get a surveyor out there to stake the actual line? Consider not, give me a definite answer.
But you have had the surveyor come and do the initial fieldwork. They just haven't plotted it to come back and pin it?
Yeah, to stake it and, and...
But they came out and did the initial fieldwork?
Supposedly they were up there on Thursday.
So then they go back and they plod it and then they come back and put the sticks, mark us?
I have no objection to them doing basically whatever they want on their property. If they wanna build a wall to my land, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, it's theirs. That's anything that happens, whatever you guys allow, I'm fine with whatever they wanna do. As far as retaining walls, it goes up clearly and that's fine.
And, and I would probably prefer to do the Jersey barrier than digging down into the land. And so that's probably what I would prefer based on the conversations we had, is I think it would be easier, I think it would be safer given the slope.
With the Jersey barrier?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you're gonna be doing some construction down there, repaving, I don't see that as a major thing of driving those eight by eight posts in, you know? That's, and that's not a big issue. You either have a piece of equipment that bangs it down or the hole is dug, concrete's dropped in, done. So the decision will become of parties. And then the board will evaluate what the, all the decisions are and, you know, where does it fit within the realm of zoning and, and the opinion of the request. You have any more?
I do.
Go.
So when I, last meeting, I said I wanted to see a nice lighting plan and I was, maybe I didn't say it enough or whatever the case may be, or didn't come across right. It's gotta be a professional design, not just someone drawing cones on the plan. You know, there's no mounting height, there's no casting or shadowing to verify that it's not gonna spill over to a lot line. There's, there's people that will take those light fixtures, they will design that and they'll show you the graphic on the ground, the area it's covering, and it'll show whether or not it's gonna spill over, it's gonna show you how much foot candles you have at any particular part. So any place that you, but, lighting design professionals will design that light system for you. I'm just concerned that you're just gonna mount some lights on there and you're just gonna aim them and hope for the best. There, there's nothing that validates that you're gonna have coverage of the park. Comment?
I just don't think we'll have that for next meeting and then, and again, like if, we don't have a decision soon, we're not, we're not gonna meet this now.
Well, Mr. Mbaji, let me say this, we've been going through this for quite a long time.
Yes.
And it's always been, we're having additions put on, additions put on. Now we have a lighting plan, who was it prepared by? This is one is Mr. Hanks was talking about, you know, and it's just, it just keeps going. You know, if we have to go out a couple more months, then I'm okay, but let's get a, a good lighting plan as he addressed and not on his way till we come to a meeting to address it and say, oh, we didn't get it, or we need it. So I think we need, at least at this point, I agree with his request. I agree with parties getting in together and discussing, coming out with a document of results, if you want, or agreement, so we can close these new loops that exist. And do you agree with what I said about that put lighting plan? You know, cause normally we will get usually a certified lighting plan from a company.
I, I...
Who drew, who drew this plan here?
That plan, that is the lighting layover on the Mackenzie engineering plan.
Yeah, but who, who cast, who made the cones? Who's, who figured that that, who's gonna be that spread? How, how? You, you, you got, you got three distinct different shapes off of the same light fixture. Right? Are, are they shielded to create that cast like this? Is that wide open to create that one? Is there a shield on this side so we don't have to go in that way?
Yeah, you can, you can narrow it, yeah.
See, and I don't, at least I don't see that through looking at this plan, this rendition of what the light is. Cause I don't, I can't tell where the shields are, you know, are they in the back or the side? You know, how they'll contain the flow of light.
Can you read it?
Yeah. I mean, we're okay, he has no tenants in that property today. But who knows in a year or two years, he may have multiple tenants and they'll be complaining about light coming in their bedroom or TV room.
Well, those are, those are facing towards the back of, there's no, there's no properties back there that's over like in the rear main.
Is there any bleed off to the sides?
There's, there's nothing back there. Like, I mean, it overlooks the hill going down into the rear, the rear main street.
So according to the descriptions, they're a hundred eighty degree cast?
And they, and they can be narrowed, yeah.
So that one's probably a one eighty, that's a ninety, that one's a one ten.
Is there anything else?
I think there's just a little more, I don't wanna use the word professional, but I'm gonna use a more professional on how the lighting is being cast out and that there's no bleed over. You know, the, the... I'm just gonna ask another question about lighting in the back of the building. You know, cause you said when they, if they're inside and they're coming out the back, they push the bar and door opens, light goes on. You said yes, he said no.
I, that's what the topic was for discussion. There's a light switch that turns the exterior light on and off inside the unit.
So, so there, there's a, a light on the exterior of each door, mainly controlled by a switch inside the unit?
Correct. Because these are not emergency exits, they're second means of egress.
Now, this is pretty dark out there at night, especially cause you're going over Derby Drive in the back, you know, there's a lot of trees and everything. So you got people coming home at night. These lights, are these motion activated?
Yep.
They are. Do they reach out into the parking lot in the back for the light? Cause I'm just thinking, my concern is if people decide to go up to the third floor, they have to climb up all that stairway. Spring, summer and fall, that's not a problem. Winter, if the steps aren't shoveled off... Winter, if the steps are shoveled off or somehow with sand or salt, could be slippery going up. And I'm just thinking the possibility of motion lights at each emergency door. So as soon as they get close to on the landing, the light comes on. It's probably on for, I don't know, thirty, forty-five seconds and it goes off. So, I mean, they would have to activate it from the inside of the switch, but coming in at night, uh, that they, it'd be an emergency light that on the back of the wall, up on each landing as they got there, not all landings at once, just the one being accessed by the individual.
So really a motion sensor light on the interior of the stairwell, which is open to the exterior, that comes on when somebody climbs the stairs.
So there is some...
That's, that's what you're asking for?
Yes.
So...
Are there any lights on the interior of the stairwell? The interior of the exterior of the stairwell, other than the lights at each exterior door currently?
I'd have to check, probably not, but I mean, there's the eight lights that go up. There's, there's two on every level.
But they're controlled by a switch by the tenant?
Yes.
Yes, which again, I think that was a, that was the end of the... It was on the inside, but I, I think that was the end of the building department we were putting together. 'Cause we tried to make them emergency egresses with lights and they wanted them this way with full doors to be treated as second egresses.
I understand that part, but I don't understand that whole stair system not being illuminated. That's throwing me a little bit. Right? I'm, I'm not following that. Anybody that's gonna use that stairway, whether it be for emergency use or just to get it to the third floor, they're hoping that their, that their, a buddy, a tenant has turned their light on the first floor and the second floor in order to find your way up? That's, that's what I'm hearing?
I think there's a statement that neither of us know whether, whether there's a light, because that's a level of detail I don't think, you know, certainly has been discussed before. And I don't have the answer to your question and I'm not gonna make a misrepresentation one way or the other.
Yeah, nonsense guessing, you either know if you don't, I'd rather you say I don't know than to guess.
But I believe the building commissioner signed off on all...
Yes.
All aspects of the building. We have an occupancy permit pending parking until from our perspective, like construction's done. The building department signed off on the whole building and we're really only talking about the issue of the parking.
Parking.
But we have, we have full compliance with the rest of the building, according to the town.
I'm just gonna generally say, I know that, given that this project has undergone this review process, and there is probably an effort by the board that I, I very much understand to prevent any future problems. There gets to be a point where the level of detail is just, we're getting so minute at this point on what is required under the special permit that was required modification because the parking lot did not meet the plan. It's not that, you know, these aren't good suggestions or that there isn't a willingness to compromise on the fact, on the part of the petitioner, but there is a desire to bring this process to a close. And we could sit here forever designing lighting systems that were the most appropriate for this property. We are not at a site plan review where the photovoltaic plan would normally be required. It is an occupied building, it has been in operation for two years. It has an occupancy permit, not the permanent one, but that is because of the parking lot, not because of, not all, but a lot of these issues. I, I would ask, because I, I certainly agree that we came here trying to comply with the plan, then we couldn't comply with the plan, then we had several alternative plans, trying to figure out what would be an acceptable plan and appreciate the board participating in that process so we could get to the right place. But we gotta, we have to bring it to an end or we're never going to reach the decision meeting. We can sit here and pick out details forever. So I'd just ask the board if at this point it can give us a list that is final to say that, because the, part of the reason the plan keeps modifying is we keep trying to meet the requests of the board. We keep trying to meet the requests of the board. And so if the board could try to consider that we need to reach a final resolution on this, on its requests, I would ask for that, for the next meeting.
So I guess my only comment to that is that you're asking us to give up something here with concessions on the parking and maneuverability requirements and stuff like that, but you keep reverting back to, "Well, that pot was already approved." So you're asking us to give something up, but you're hesitant on giving us something in exchange for the relief that you're asking for. So I just wanted to toss that at you, just not that. And, and a lot of different scenarios, like, well, we'll throw the pot down to three oh seven pine. We didn't ask for that. That was your idea to bring that in. Okay, so don't, don't say that everything was at the whims of the board asking you to keep jumping through all the hurdles and so on and so forth. Those are your ideas. We're gonna say, "Hey, go buy a pot down the street and then have the people walk a quarter mile." That was not us. We entertained it, we looked at it. We went along with you. So don't make it sound like that would be a nitpicky and when that we're trying to push this off, I would rather be done and over with last year.
The petitioner would as well. And I, I certainly don't suggest that this is all the board. And I know the board's motivations are, again, to reach a good project, to, to have a good project. I'm just saying we need to bring it to a close.
Yeah, and I think too, Attorney Tree, as Mr. Van Bommel said, you know, the plans were approved, lighting was approved, everything was approved. But there's nothing wrong with looking at enhancements even after the fact that for a safety procedure or a safety issue, like I said, we don't think of everything right away. But if you go on as long as this, at least that's seeing different things, you think different things. Like, I personally like the lighting for people coming in at night, ten o'clock in the winter, if the stairs are properly treated and if they're carrying groceries, a child, you know, and somebody slips, gets hurt because they can't see. You know, I don't look, if there's a lot of money invested here. And I don't see some of these issues as being a tremendous additional investment for the safety of the applicants, and that's what I'm looking at, and looking on the special permit requirements. You know, that it's an enhancement for the applicant and for, let's say, the inhabitants of the building. But, I mean, that's my personal feeling. 'Cause I, I personally think it's a safety issue and I know how dark it gets down there. And we're not just going up one flight of stairs, it'll go in up three. And if they're not, and we, and they, you can't treat those stairs, you know, if a storm's on, somebody's not gonna run out and treat it right then and there. There's a timeline for reasonableness to do it, but ice stays for a long time on stairs. Walks, driveways. You know, your twelve-hour thing, maybe that's adequate, maybe it's not, I'm not gonna question that, but... My concern is the people that have to go up three flights of stairs in the dark and maybe have something in their hands. And you can't always carry everything, you can't always hang on to the rails. I'm just, you know, my opinion is trying to make it safer for the tenants and the inhabitants of that building. Just my comment. Yeah, your stuff has been approved. That's the first pass. The second pass, there's always enhancements that happen. And I don't think they would, you know, bid the commissioner or anyone's gonna turn down, "Oh, we're gonna improve the lighting." Well, that wasn't on the first plan. You're not gonna get that. They'll be happy to have the improvements, at, at least in my opinion. So that's all I have to say on that. You'll get your chance.
And I'm gonna just take it in slightly different direction, just for clarity, 'cause I'm gonna have to rate this thing out at some point. Originally, you had requirements for eleven parking spaces, or Google for eleven parking spaces.
Correct.
And now you're down to ten?
Correct.
And with one less apartment?
Correct.
Is that, is that, that's where we are? After, we've been bouncing all, I, I just wanna make sure that I got it.
Yeah.
And they're all lined up in the back of the lot now. There's no more John soft to the side over by the Jersey barrier.
Sure.
They're all, they're all straight in the back now. Have you, I, I haven't seen a plan, I don't remember seeing a plan around the turnaround zones and that type of stuff. How close are you in terms of making those turns?
It was marked...
Eighteen foot six inches. By the way, you have a typo. You have two typos, two, two incorrect numbers. Let me, you keep going, I'll, I'll show you.
It is my lucky knife tonight. I am just gonna say that typos are not in such a common criteria.
They didn't have a plan.
If you can correct these, you might as well. So right here, you got that nineteen foot six, it's eighteen six, right? Should you carry that over to...
To the next one.
Nineteen six.
Yeah, but it is eighteen six.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just gonna ask if we can leave those a little bit. So...
No, no, okay.
Yeah, I think that's the relevant marking right there. Up here, you can see the controversial space eight. Um, and it's twenty-three one up there.
You have any more questions?
Okay, I have just some thoughts, no?
Is there another question?
Get a little more questions?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Holm, your hand has been up a couple times, please.
The issue about the lighting, I'm trying to tell you sooner. Um, so that place is lit up like a Christmas tree. There's lights on every floor, two, I think, one on each side, so if you stand here...
On that back stairwell?
Yes, if you stand here, it's, it's probably right now, it's probably all lit up. I've never seen it not lit up altogether. It's not like one switch, it's all lit up all the time. So there's plenty of, I would say there's plenty of lighting there, but I don't go those steps, so I don't know. But there is, those lights are on all the time.
Thank you for your...
Thank you, bud. One problem, it's probably solved.
I'd like to thank Mr. Holm very well, I very appreciate it.
He's honest.
He is. And probably the person who looks at the lights most often, he's asked a better question.
Do you have anything else?
I, I just wanna make sure they're clear on what you're requesting for the next meeting so we can pretty much hopefully finish this, 'cause...
Okay, Attorney Tree, you wanna, you've got, I'm sure you've marked it all down of what we asked for.
So... There is a request for the Jersey barrier to be a guard rail rather than a Jersey barrier.
A comment, that was a comment.
It's a comment, okay.
It's not a request.
Okay. There is a request to communicate with the abutter and see what items can be resolved and perhaps a resolution in writing if both parties can reach that resolution. To me, that is on tilting of the driveway to the left to avoid runoff onto the abutter's property and perhaps a little curbing next to his building to likewise direct it otherwise. Uh, there's a request for more details on the lighting. I, hopefully, we have just resolved the issue of there being sufficient lighting on each landing with the abutter's testimony. Detail of whether the lights can be shielded or narrowed. There's a comment that, and I'm gonna put, there's a comment that a photovoltaic plan would be helpful. And I'm just gonna say that I, I think that's a lot to ask. And I, where the issues are, the parking, not the lighting. Certainly the detail on the lights to be used, whether they can be shielded or narrowed. Anything that... Did you, oh, I'm sorry, was that a hand raised?
No.
Okay. Anything that can be depicted from the product information, sure. But a photovoltaic plan, I think, is just a bridge too far for the modification that we're asking for. Perhaps there are design professionals who can do it quickly and at low cost. That's, you know, not been my experience with it. But the comment is noted. And that's, and then, of course, the last thing is the surveyor.
So are you waiting for the surveyor so you know the property line? So you can kinda design how you're gonna do that driveway? Is that what we're...
There was an allegation at the beginning of these proceedings that the property line was closer to our house. And I think what that was, there's been some site visits by board members, there's been some communication by abutters and discussions that have taken place outside of meeting. And I think there was a mistake, a mistake in that the abutter said close to his house and, uh, close to his house and it was understood as close to the petitioner's house. Because he's appeared today and acknowledged that his understanding is that it's right on his building line.
So that's gonna kinda affect the driveway though? It might end up being a little more...
We're all in agreement that the property line is essentially on his building. I think, again, in a prior meeting, there was some concern if that was true, but like...
'Cause in looking at that picture where the erosion has occurred, you're gonna probably have to fill, fill that in a little bit.
Minimal fill, there's gonna be regrading, which is processing of the pavement, and I'm just repeating what Mr. Van Bommel is saying at this point. Regrading, minimal fill brought in and paving to keep it, you know, a little smoother and directed to the left, maybe a little ridge along the right-hand side so the property does, the water goes that way. But I don't think there's a dumpster load full of fill being brought in. We're not bringing these...
Right, right. We have to know where the property line is to have the driveway done?
Well, I'm gonna tell you that if there's an agreement with the abutter that this structure may be placed where it's depicted to be placed, then if we're not the owner, we have permission of the owner to place the structure. I do think there's an as-built plan that probably is owed to the building department at the end of this and that will locate. Their surveyor was because there was a question about the location of the property line. Um, the surveyor was because there was a question about the location of the property line. Okay. Um, and the only way, uh, to resolve that, such a question, is to actually have the surveyor stick it or to understand that all of the parties in interest agree where it may be placed. Um, so, it's my suggestion that, um, while that was a request, um, if we're not able to come up with it, you could forego it provided that the abutter agrees.
If the abutter agrees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And if you need to, you know, a, a situation and a building commissioner here.
I do.
And you know what day is the interim commissioner works?
Mm-hmm.
Monday and Friday or something like that, so.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanna make you aware that as long as you know that, then you know when to go if you have to go to the commissioner to see him.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? We're gonna continue. Any other questions, Mel?
No, no.
Mr. Ante?
No.
Good, then, uh, your motion to continue this to next month.
So, no.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Then, all, no? All those in favor? Uh...
Right.
Continue to August sixteenth, I think, is the date.
Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you. Chris, Attorney Tree, don't mind our first second. I have a question to ask you outside of the context of this. Anything else? Your-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any questions, parlays? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.